I'll just mute me.
So we are actively recording. And so feel free, take it away if you'd like to start the meeting.
Okay, so we do have a quorum. That's great. I look forward to seeing everyone and talking to everyone tonight. I trust everyone as well, and their respective families are well also. First thing on the agenda is the pledge. So I'd ask you, please, to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic-
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation-
One nation under God.
Indivisible-
Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone out there from the public that would like to speak? Once more, is there anyone out there from the public who would like to speak?
Peter, it's Donna. Can you please do a voice roll call so everybody knows who is on the call?
Oh, sure. I hope I remember everybody, Donna.
Well, each person should state their name, each individual person.
Okay, so I'll start. Peter Cassarella is here.
Dale Bland.
I'm just gonna go down the list so everybody knows when to talk. Emma, are you here?
Emma is here.
Emma Foot. Althea, are you here?
She's muted.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute her. Okay, we'll come back to her at the end. Donna Lanza, are you here? Thanks, Althea. Donna Lanza is here. Gail, are you here? I think you may be muted still. I can't seem to, let's see.
I think Gail is still muted.
How is that now?
She's unmuted now. Yeah, Gail Richmond is here. Marion Spalding is here. Sure, via the phone. So, hi, who is this on the phone?
This is Sue.
Hey, Sue, we're just doing roll calls, so Sue Porter is in the meeting.
Kevin, were you able to hear me? I went out-
Eventually, yes. At first, no, but I did hear you. You sound good now. Although now you're gone again.
I have everybody, Kevin. I've recorded. They're all here.
Okay, great. So I'll hand it back over to Peter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll go on to our reports. We will start with the approval of the minutes of our February 10th meeting. Does anyone have any changes, corrections, additions, deletions that they want? Do I hear a motion then?
I will have to abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, I need to get a motion, please, in a second.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as given.
Is that Gail?
That's Gail.
And who abstained?
We haven't voted yet. Gail has just made a motion. I'm looking for a second on that motion, please.
All right, I'll second the motion. This is Sue Porter.
Thank you, Sue. Now, is there any discussion about the minutes? Are there any changes, corrections, deletions, additions? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Peter, why don't I do a roll call? I can go down the list. That way, everybody will- That way Marion can tell who's who.
Okay, yep, that's fine.
Okay, so Gail Richmond.
Aye.
Peter Cassarella.
Aye.
Sue Porter.
Aye.
Dale Bland.
I have to abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
My list just got switched around. That's fine. Danielle Galligan.
Aye.
Emma Foot.
Abstain.
Althea Carr. Althea, you're muted.
Althea was absent also.
Althea, you're still muted.
Abstain, not at the meeting. Could you hear me?
Now I can.
Okay, abstain, not at the meeting.
Okay. Did I miss anybody? My list switched around halfway through. Okay, great. Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, financial report. That was included in Kevin's package. Did anyone have any questions for Kevin? Okay, no questions. We'll go on to the library director's report, please, Kevin.
Okay, so you have this in front of you. I'm just gonna read it down anyway. So, starting with the reopening plan. The town's reopening committee continues to meet weekly. All offices have resumed a reduced level of service to the public, and plans are being made to gradually expand those services. Training and PPE acquisition are the largest barriers to increasing services more quickly. The governor's office placed libraries on the list of organizations to open on June 20th, June 17th, I think, since this was written, as the second phase of his state reopen plan. I was asked to submit a plan for reopening on June 22nd, which is the following Monday, but that seems unlikely for a couple of reasons. It's difficult to obtain the PPE I requested, and the majority of libraries in the state seem to be aiming for a later reopen date. A lot of them are after July 4th, seems to be more than norm. The town manager's office would like to hear this board's thoughts about when the building should open up. And there are more details about staff and building preparation in the attached plan that we can talk about a little bit later. Services, curbside pickup. We started doing curbside pickup last Monday. Patrons are grateful to be able to check out materials. Again, they're happy we're doing that. Eventkeeper is a new calendar service and room reservation service that we're subscribing to. It's from the same company that makes our museum pass system, and it's got a lot of potentially nice things that I think will be advantageous to us once we're allowed to start doing events again right now, not so much. But it allows us to post events to our website without logging into WordPress. It'll give patrons the ability to register for programs right from our calendar. So instead of having to keep a clipboard, they can just fill out an online form. They could request room reservations from our website instead of having to call a staff member and then fill out a paper form. It'll automatically put room reservations onto our public calendar. Right now, we're keeping two separate calendars, so it'll keep everybody on the same page, and it'll just centralize our program information for our staff. So right now, I'm just working out the settings, trying to get it to cooperate with our website. And once that's working, we're gonna be able to start implementing it with our upcoming summer reading programs. Also, the library subscribes to Zoom, so we're subscribed for Zoom through next May, and we'll be using it for programs and meetings like this one throughout the summer and maybe further on. I'm curious to see how much of this type of programming will still be in demand as we return to business as usual, but I see a lot of potential for this to be incorporated into everything that we're doing. I think there's a lot of pluses in addition to the minuses of meeting virtually. Moving on to collection. We're receiving shipments of new materials and prepping them for circulation. We'll have to do a bit of shelf maintenance when the part-time staff return as we have like three months of new materials that nobody's seen, and there's no room on our new shelves anymore. Digital circulation rose again in May, though we're nowhere near what our normal circulation levels are. Curbside pickup this month means it's gonna jump up again, but I'm sure it's not gonna get anywhere near what a normal June would look like for us. I'll be making a few more large purchases in overdrive before the end of June with the rest of our materials budget because there'll probably be less funds for this type of material once we get into the new fiscal year. So I wanna make sure I can get ahead of it, if possible. Moving on to building. So painting, I have CertaPro coming in to do some painting in the lobby this month. Just did the stairwells down to the first floor landing and up to the second floor landing. They're matching the existing covers and covering up all the stains and scuffs that are all over the wall there. I asked them to use a paint this time that'll be a little bit more washable than what's currently on there because now you try and wash it off, and the paint comes off more than any of the scuffs or stains. On the HVAC, I reached out to ESC about the status of our ordered equipment, and I was told that we should still expect the rooftop units to be ready in the middle of July. So installation could theoretically occur shortly afterwards, but we'll have to call a meeting with all the involved parties in the near future to discuss dates and how that will affect accessibility to the building and all those sorts of details. Janitorial service. Our janitor is retiring at the end of June, but Admiral Cleaning has another individual lined up to take his responsibilities, so there shouldn't be an interruption in service. The new person comes highly recommended, and the only change should be that he cleans another facility in the morning, so he may end up doing our building at night. I also offered, if he wanted to do the mid-mornings, that would be fine too because he normally comes Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and those are the days we open at noon. So he could probably come a little bit later then, after he's done with his other building. Flooring. I've requested the flooring material to be purchased and stored for us, but I haven't received a confirmation from Northeast Flooring that it's officially happened. So I'm continuing to follow up with them about that. Windows project. As soon as I verify that we have the funds in place for next year's, next fiscal year's budget, I'll see about getting the rest of the windows ordered for the project. Elevator, the elevator wasn't functioning in May, but it's since been fixed, and now it seems to be working just fine. Moving on to the budget. We're nearing the end of the fiscal year, and we're in good shape with all of our line items.
Can I ask you a question? Kevin, I'm sorry, can I ask you a question about the flooring?
Yes.
Is it safe to say that the purchase order for the flooring and have the flooring company store the flooring has been issued out of Elaine's department and is in the hands of the vendor?
We don't have a purchase order issued because we don't have a bill. We just have the estimate that we're working on. So I think, I was anticipating them ordering it and then sending us a bill, and then I would pay that out of the CIP fund that it's set for.
Okay, so, and Elaine's aware of how this is going down?
I believe so. I haven't checked up with her in a while, but the money is all set there. Nothing's really changed. I haven't checked in with her specifically. But I can keep her abreast of it. I'll just let her know what's going on. Donna wants to say something.
Yeah, I think we should keep her abreast of what's going on. We've got a lot of stuff going on, and we don't want to overwhelm the lady.
Okay. Donna, go ahead. I'm sorry. I muted you as you unmuted yourself.
Okay, so when you place the order with the flooring company, you can do a requisition through the accounts payable system that would encumber the money.
Okay.
Right, I would check with finance, but that's probably, you know, what you usually do when you order something. I'm not sure, you know, it may be different. You may need to have access to that account number because it's a CIP. But usually, we do, you know, a requisition to encumber the funds.
Okay, I didn't do it because I wasn't sure what the exact number would be. I'm still working off of the estimates. So that's why I didn't think it was appropriate at time. But I will encumber the money, and I'll check in with Elaine about that stuff.
And this is Althea. Just a, it's minor for us, but something important for the custodian who's retiring. If we could just send him a thank you note, that would be nice.
Of course, yeah. I've got something in the works, yeah. Danielle has her hand up. Danielle, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask about the cleaning. I know we had discussed it before about possibly looking at other companies, and we ended up staying with this company. So since there's a new person coming on, is it wise to meet with that person and kind of go over the different areas of the library and what is expected? To go over maybe some of the things that weren't happening before that we want to happen, and we didn't end up switching, so this might be a nice time to do that?
Yeah, I have, we, I'm speaking with the company about me. We're gonna have a meeting, the three of us. His supervisor, him and myself, are gonna get together before he takes over, and he's gonna spend a little bit of time with the guy that's currently working now. So, well, he should know exactly what he's supposed to do by the time he takes over.
Okay, great.
How many hours?
Thank you.
How many hours does he work on each of those three days?
He works 11 hours total, so it's like a little over like three and a half.
So will that work for a mid-morning start?
It would depend when he starts. So, you know, if he came in at 8:30, he could feasibly be done by noon by the time we were opening, and that would be okay. Or it would just, it would depend when he's able to get over to our building from his other building. I have a feeling he may prefer just to do it at night, but I thought, since we're used to have people coming in the morning, and I wouldn't mind crossing paths with him more often, I wouldn't mind if he came in mid-morning either.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, or shall I move on? Okay, just interrupt if you need anything. Okay, so on the budget, we are in good shape with all of our line items for the end of the fiscal year. The elevator repair used up the rest of the building maintenance line, but I'm hopeful nothing huge will, you know, knock on wood. In the last, next few weeks, nothing huge will break in the building. We'll have a good chunk of our part-time staff salary line remaining, but that's expected because we haven't really been spending much of it over the past several months. I haven't received a copy for 2021 yet, but based upon what was approved by the Board of Finance, I'm expecting it to be pretty similar to the proposed budget from the town manager's office that we saw in March. I've been told that we're gonna get that soon.
Kevin, this is Sue. I have a question regarding the elevator. Is there a lifespan for that? I mean, it is 20-something years old. Has anybody said anything to you?
Nobody said anything about replacing the elevator. The part that was just replaced was a bit more expensive because it upgraded some of the technology that was being used within the elevator. So it was replacing old technology with new. So I'm guessing that's kind of how it works with elevators, that they can replace some of the mechanical equipment from kind of underneath without us seeing it. But I haven't been told that, you know, we should look into replacing our elevator or it's nearing end of life or anything like that.
Okay, I just was wondering if we should start looking into, you know, planning to fund that, but if they haven't said anything.
Yeah, I imagine that would be something that may come up with the service contract. We can kind of see as that service contract gets higher than it, you know, than we may be. That may be what motivates us to start looking for something, something newer.
All right.
So then, children's department. We're continuing with online Storytime programs. That's been well-received, and Sherry and I are enjoying playing around with that new medium. Sherry continues to replan for her summer reading programs. The state theme this year is Imagine Your Story, and she, right now, she's working with all the previously booked performers to present their programs virtually, opposed to in-person. The presenters will be, they'll use Zoom. They'll send us a link that we'll be able to share with people that have registered, and they will do the program somewhat like this. The cost is lower in a lot of cases, so we may be able to actually offer more programming than usual, and then links and directions and all that sort of thing about how to use the software will be made available on the library's homepage. She's also working on getting the Read Therapy Dog for an online program as well. And we'll be looking at doing take-home craft kits for children to take home along with book checkouts to sort of supplement for, you know, we normally have an open craft room up on the kids' floor during the summer and supplement some of the activities that they're not gonna have a chance to attend during our summer reading program. So we'll be starting those once we get the part-time staff back in. Okay, and then we have the charts for visitors and circulation and all that sort of stuff.
Kevin?
But there's not really, yes?
Gail, I was waiting for you to finish your report, and then I wanted to interrupt. I noticed in your pages that you reported to us that there is nothing of you and Claire and Sherry attending any of the free webinars that the Connecticut State Library gave in these last few months. Have you taken any that you just didn't list?
We've been to different meetings and webinars. Nothing that we've listed on here. The first couple of weeks, we were working a little bit heavier on that sort of learning, but we've been too busy, honestly, to be attending a lot of that stuff just with all the shelf prep and everything that we're doing, making all the masks and everything like that. So we've done a little bit of it, but not a tremendous amount.
Have you been able to sign up for the June 18th communications workshop with Libby Post?
I haven't signed up for that, no. I have seen the email somewhere.
Gail, what would that entail, Gail? I don't mean the signup, but the webinar itself, what would it be?
I can read to you from my mail. It's a marketing and strategic communication during COVID-19. How do you market to your community when you can't be face-to-face? How do you get your library's message out when folks are focused on the pandemic and staying safe? How can the library reestablish itself as an essential service after being closed to the public for so long? And it's given by Libby Post. I've attended workshops with her. She's fantastic. She's the CEO of a communication company.
Yeah, they've been doing some advertising for that one. It does sound interesting, and on your recommendation, Gail. If it can fit into my calendar, I'll see if I can attend that one.
Yeah, she's terrific, and it's only a few dollars thing.
Yeah, honestly, there's been so many of them, and especially in the first couple of weeks when I was taking them, I found them to be more often than not just, you know, treading over the same ground. So there wasn't, I didn't feel tremendously motivated to go to a lot of them, but this one, if you say that she's good-
She's good.
I'll take a look. That sounds good. It's great. Well, thank you for the recommendation.
The cost is right.
The cost is right, yeah.
Free, yeah.
Danielle has her hand up.
I was just curious about the attendance for the online programming that you or Sherry have been doing. Have you been getting a lot of patrons that have been signing up for it, or?
Well, the only online program we've really been doing are the Storytimes through YouTube. And on average, each of those videos gets a handful of views. So we, so since March, we've had a little over 1,000 or so people watch them. It's interesting, some, you know, one of them will be watched like 150 times, and then some of them be watched three times. But they are all definitely being viewed, and it is adding up. I don't know if I can put those in the state report. They were, Maria from the state library had said that YouTube video, YouTube views wouldn't count towards program attendance, but people are using them.
And that would be attendance for anyone, correct? Not just Hebron? So when you see those numbers, it could be anybody around the world?
Could be anybody around the world, yes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the report?
I have a question about, that you're continuing to plan for the virtual programs for children's department. Since we're going to be opening soon, could those become actual indoor library programs with just a limited number or whatever the controls are?
Well, if we were allowed to do that, it's something that we would broach. At this time, you know, the ground is shifting beneath our feet so often. We find that it's safer just to plan for things to stay closer to what they are now than to be overly optimistic and plan for something that'll have to be changed last minute. So, you know, the, we're going forward and planning that everything will be virtual. If the restrictions are lifted, Sherry and I will certainly have that conversation. We'd rather be able to do a real program that people are used to, but we also don't want to push it just for the sake of doing it.
And you get a good turnout when the library's open?
Theoretically, I mean, you know, you can't pack as many people in as you normally would, and people are nervous to come out for a lot of things still. So it's hard to say. But I imagine more people would come to an in-person program versus a virtual.
Well, as you said, it might be premature at this point, Kevin, until we see what the specifics are for opening and the date that we have to get back to Town Hall on for our recommendation of opening.
Donna has her hand up.
We did receive, just last night, the State of Connecticut sector rules for libraries. So that does have some of the detail in it about numbers, you know, the 50% capacity and some of the guidelines. So we'll get that report out to you so you can see, you know, what the recommendation is from the state.
Yes, I have it right here. I was gonna share it to my screen once we got to that part of the agenda.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on director's report before we move on?
Kevin, this is Sue again. I do have, for the cleaning stuff, and I think I emailed you this before, something that we're using at the hospital called Virix. I can send you a copy of the label, but that's an acceptable cleaner and also bleach and water solution. But that is only good for 24 hours, so you'd have to make up a new batch every day.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that about the bleach and water. That's good to know. Because that's what we were using previously. Although I think since you were going through a bottle every day, we probably were okay with that. Right, so the town has a solution that I'm actually gonna be trained in on Wednesday that you can mist around the building, just kind of all over everything, and then you don't have to wipe it down. It's supposed to kill the virus on contact. So the plan right now is at the end of the day.
Oh, okay. I was just thinking more of like- I was just thinking more of like, you know, your high-touch areas, like the countertops or even your books. You could wipe down the covers if necessary with the bleach.
Okay. Right, I was thinking for the bleach solution as well during the day, between Clorox wipes and bleach solution. So periodically, the high-touch surfaces will be wiped down. And then at the end of the day, the whole building will be sprayed down to clean itself overnight.
Hmm, all right.
Donna, do you have something you wanted to add?
We also have acquired large quantities of liquid sanitizer that's 80% alcohol. So I know we use that alcohol to clean the books, but this will be able to use to clean the books and the high-touch surfaces. And we'll provide, you know, spray bottles for that because the Clorox wipes are becoming very, very hard to acquire. But we have
Yes, they are.
Large quantities of this alcohol solution that we distribute. We're going to have small spray bottles and larger spray bottles for surface cleaning.
It'll be like the gym when you get off the machine, the patrons can spray down wherever they were.
Who will do the end-of-day, larger cleaning, spraying, misting?
So that's, we're still determining that a little bit. So originally, I had thought that somebody, one of the part-time staff, it would be part of their closing procedure. But it's come to my attention that there needs to be a certain amount of training because of the safety equipment that you're wearing. The mask counts as a ventilator, so you need to be trained to wear the proper equipment and do it correctly. So I'm going to be trained on it on Wednesday. So my thought is that myself and Sheri and Claire, the three of us, will hopefully be able to be trained on it. And then we can take turns, you know, in the case that I'm not there. Or, you know, I don't want to get Carbo Tunnel from doing it every day, so maybe we can share a little bit. So it'll probably fall on the full-time staff.
So the spray cleaning that we're training them on is a product that we're using from the fire department's recommendation. They use it to clean the inside of the ambulances and their equipment. And it is aerosolized into the air, and then it cleans the surfaces. You need to wear goggles, gloves, and masks when you use this product, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Excuse me?
I say, any other questions for Kevin?
No.
Move on to Friends then, Kevin?
It sounds good, yeah.
Do you want me to read Pam's note to us, or do you want to read it?
I can read it, just give me a moment to pull it up. So Pam couldn't make the meeting tonight, she sent a quick email over here. Let's see.
Do you want me to send it to you?
Sure. Oh, do you have it in front of you, Peter? Because you can just read it then.
All right, I'll read it. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
As Kevin stated, Pam couldn't be with us this evening, so she sent us a report. "Hi Kevin, I will not be joining the Zoom meeting tonight. Here are updates from the Friends. We held a special meeting Zoom/phone. We canceled the June book sale and said the September sale was to be determined. Our current officers agreed to continue to serve until we are able to meet and schedule a vote. We voted to give $4,200 for the children's summer programming. We agreed to support Ellen's online book sales in any way we can. She will be expanding to current adult fiction and more children's books. We also agreed not to publish any requests for donations until the library is open to the public. I would also appreciate it if you noted that Maureen and Tim Howard did an incredible job of emptying the donation bin and taking the books to their home for storage until the library is open to the public." So that's Pam's report.
So the bin is still active, except that it's being emptied to their home?
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
Some places have put tape around it and are not accepting, but we are.
Yeah, they've been keeping it, so it hasn't been overflowing. I get calls all the time about people doing their spring cleaning at their home more often than they used to be, and they're trying to donate the books to us that they have. I've been telling people to hold on to them until we open the building again, but the bin still gets full, no matter what we do. We have a sign on the bin that says the same, if you can hold on to your books. If the bin is full, don't leave any boxes outside. But they've been really good about it. I had them in one time to drop everything off into the Friends space, but they've just been storing it all at home. Yeah, they're doing a fantastic job.
Town managers, Representative Donna, anything to add?
I don't, I think we're going to talk about the reopening plan a little bit later, so I'll wait until then. Just a couple of things I'll just mention, just to keep the board abreast of some things that are going on. The town last week established a task force to try to promote supporting the local businesses in the community. Under the, you know, closures, a lot of the businesses are suffering. So we're going to start an initiative that will last probably over the summer to try to bring people back to town and to support the businesses and promote shopping local. So there will be events throughout the summer, probably kicking off in a couple of weeks. So we're going to be looking for everybody's, you know, all hands on deck on trying to promote that. Kevin mentioned the training, but the rest of the stuff we can talk about under the reopening item of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Gail, anything from Board of Selectmen?
No, Donna mentioned our task force that's starting. So I have nothing else to add, but I've been making phone calls and anyone I call asking if they can donate some time and effort to this task force. It's been very well received, everyone wants to do a shop in Hebron kind of program. And that's it.
Good, thank you.
As you know, Gail, Old Town Hall has signage, one of those signs like the library.
The sandwich place?
So that could be used.
Yeah. Gail, remember that.
Okay, Chairman's Report, I have nothing specific, other than Kevin and the staff have been doing yeoman's work, making masks, and trying to make some sense out of this predicament we're in. Under Old Business, anything new for building updates, Kevin, that we haven't discussed from your report?
Nothing that we haven't discussed from the report. The exterior signage, since I don't really know exactly what the next year's budget will be, I'm just going to hold off until I see that before considering ordering anything.
The poet laureate committee?
Can I just make a comment? Peter, can I just make a comment? This is Sue.
Yes, absolutely, Sue.
Well, I just want to say that I'm very happy that we're making use of the downtime and getting that lobby painted, it's needed it for a long time. And that our flooring is finally moving forward. That's been two or three years, I think, in the process. So I'm glad that that's being done. At least, you know, it makes you feel like something's finally getting done. Everything was on hold for so long, so. It's a couple of bright spots.
Yes, they are.
And that's it, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thanks. Poet Laureate Committee, anything new and exciting to report?
Well, that sort of got cut off in February, you know, with that last meeting. And we, you know, we're considering a press release going out from the trustees and plan for gathering and having applications that could have been handed out at Maple Fest and so on. So nothing has been done. Everything's been on hold until we somehow meet and discuss. I really don't know where we're going or when we can go. We could have a press release, we could put applications out, but we really can't bring in any potential poets or people just interested in the entire process. So, you know, what do people think about that?
I think it needs to be on hold for the moment because there's so many things going on in town to get everything up and running and trying to get somewhat near a normal. But it's something that, I mean, as you know, I'm very, very interested in it and want to work on it, but I think we need to wait.
I agree. Althea?
I agree too. I think we need to hold off for now and then take it up at a later time. I don't want to forget about it, I think it's very important.
All right, so we just keep it on the agenda from month to month at this point?
Semi-on topic. If you ever did want to use the library's Zoom account to do some sort of virtual meeting, you're welcome to it, that goes for, you know, any committee or, you know, strategic plan committees or anything like that. Just let me know and I'll coordinate it.
I know what else. Kevin, when the library gets open partially or whatever, you and I had talked about some sort of poetry exhibit, perhaps in that case? Books or wherever, or in the children's area?
Sure, yeah, we can put something together. Yeah.
Okay, good. The 2020 budget? I think you covered that in your Director's Report, didn't you, Kevin?
Right, nothing besides what was in the report.
Ordinance changes. I'm sure nothing's been done on that, given the pandemic and everything else that's going on. So similar to the poet laureate, I would suggest that we leave it on the agenda so we don't forget it.
I have a question on that. We had, that included eliminating the treasurer, correct? But we were leaving the secretary and the chair on there. Is there any way that we could add a vice chair? Is it too late to, you know, add that, or is that a possibility?
Yeah, that's a possibility, because as I see it, it's a possibility because we have not yet formally sent anything over to Town Hall asking the Selectmen to take a look at it and bless it. So you're suggesting?
I think it wouldn't hurt to have it. If there's absence or whatever, you have a backup. Even if it's not really used, that person, that position could be in place.
Yeah, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but Gail, didn't we have an assistant chair?
We always had a vice chair, yes.
Yeah, I thought we had one in there.
Yeah. Gee, when I was chair, Sue was my vice chair. So Sue, we always had a vice chair, didn't we?
Yes, and then Althea was my vice chair.
Correct.
So it is there.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, all right, we'll forget what I said then.
We just don't have anyone in that position right now.
Okay.
And the town email address? We need to use the information that Donna sent us and get ourselves an email address with the town, if you haven't already done it. I'm going to coordinate my work with Kevin so he can help me with it. If anybody wants to join us, we'll let you know.
Danielle has her hand up.
Is that a requirement, each of the board members should have an email address through the town? And should we be using that?
As I understand?
I think it's a strong recommendation. Because if you're using your, if you're using your personal email for town business, it could create privacy issues, it should something be FOI-able. It's just cleanest to have a separate account where all of that stuff goes to, should it have to be accessed.
So when will that get started, so that all the library business will start going through the town account and not through the home emails?
As soon as they're set up, I think. Donna, is it right that they're already created?
They were created months ago and all the credentials were sent out. And I received a couple of the sign-offs back. I don't have everybody's, but it is something that's very highly recommended. So if, you know, if anybody needs help with the access, you know, we're willing to help you. And don't want to wait too long, because then we're probably going to have to reset passwords. And it may be, some people may be using it already, but when we get to the point where everybody has signed into their email and knows how to access it, that's the only mail, email we should be sending town business or library business on.
So should we make a date that, like, we should start that for July, or?
I would
That would be good.
Recommend that, because it's been a while now, and I know, you know, COVID happened, but it wouldn't hurt to set a date. And if anybody needs the information, again, let me know. But I am pretty sure some of you did access the email and sign off on the form, so.
Those of you who are using the town email, please just make sure you send me a note so I know to include the town email on future communications, and then I can remove your personal email from the mailing list.
Peter, did you want to ask me something?
No, I just wanted to say, Danielle, that this really came to light the night of the all-boards meeting in the library. The town attorney, as Donna says, strongly, strongly suggests that we all use a town email address, certainly for privacy reasons. As Donna said, if anything is ever subpoenaed, you don't want to be turning all of your own private documents over to whoever's looking at it.
Kevin?
Thank you.
Kevin?
Yes, Althea.
This is Althea. Yeah, I think it came out, I think we got a letter in February, because it was the same week that I had surgery, so I didn't respond. And just because of the surgery, I had it that week. So I finally took care of it with Donna. But I don't remember if, Donna, I don't remember if I actually sent the letter back once I did hook up with it. So can I? So can I just send you a note or something? Or do you want to send me another form if it's not there?
I can check and see if I have your form. And if not, I can do another, because it's to acknowledge that you received the policy. The other thing, the town, we archive and filter all of the email that runs through these accounts. So we are responsible for keeping the archives. If there's ever a discovery, your computer would not, your personal computers would not be subject to a discovery. And we're doing some, you know, filtering for viruses and phishing scams and all of that. So it adds a layer of protection also.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Althea, do you want me to start sending stuff to that address and get rid of the other one that I have?
Let me just make sure I still have my, find my password to get it.
Okay. When you get into it, just send me a quick note from the new address and then I'll...
Okay.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Okay, on to the heart of the matter, a library reopening. After we leave this topic, or before we leave the topic, we need to take a vote as to what date we want to recommend the Town Hall at the library be open for business. So Kevin, why don't you help us with what the plan is?
Okay, so I submitted a plan last week for reopening the building. Originally, we had thought for the June 22 date, and that shifted a little bit. First thing, let me just share my screen so we can go over what some of the governor's office's recommendations are for opening libraries. So let's just do that.
So this does not match what you sent in the packet?
No, this is from the governor's office. Maybe I got it here. There it is. Okay, so this came out yesterday and they sent it over. So let's see here. So a couple of suggestions, capacity limit at 50% of the fire code. This is something we've been kind of anticipating all along, and I'm not particularly worried about it because, because we're usually not at capacity. We have kind of a large space for the amount of people that are currently using it.
Donna? We're not viewing what you're talking about. There's a different...
Oh. Okay, I apologize. It's good. Stop share. Screen share.
It was on Eventkeeper.
Okay.
There we go.
Is, they sit here? So 50% capacity. We're going to keep track of that, but I don't foresee that being a large issue with how large the space is and the amount of people that are usually in there. So in-person services being limited, I mean, that kind of goes without saying. It's, we're not encouraging people to stick around in the space once we open up. It's very much come in, get the materials that you need and leave. So some of the, some of the encouragement where we want people to stick around, treat it like a community center. We're going to be, like, removing the toys and things like that from the children's area. It's certainly things that we're thinking about. The circulation. Now, there's a couple more that are going to be installed. So there'll be like a nice wall of plexiglass protecting the staff from patrons as they're coming in. Fines and due dates, they're suggesting that we waive fines and extend due dates. Since we don't have fines, that is something that we're in pretty good shape about. We're keeping our standard due dates for now, but just being fairly lax about renewing and, you know, some of those things where we'd only renew something once, we're pushing it along further. So we don't, nobody should ever have to feel like they have to come out just to return a book. It's not, that's not that important. All of our returns will be taken through the book drop. So when people normally would hand you a book to check in, we're going to make everybody put everything, excuse me, write in the book drop. And then we're going to quarantine all of those items for 48 hours. So we have been quarantining them for 72 hours, but 48 is what they're recommending now. So that's, that's nice that we can check things in one day earlier. So that's what we've been currently checking, putting them on a cart one day, waiting three days, then checking them in and shelving them. It's been our current workflow. So as far as the book stacks go, a lot of libraries are considering closing the book stacks so people can't browse for materials. I don't think that's necessary in our building. I think that there is enough space that people can look at things and if somebody needs to walk by quickly, I don't think that's creating a dangerous scenario. So we'll have signs up encouraging social distancing and maintaining your six-foot radius and wearing the face masks and all the protective equipment. And I think that the book stacks will be safe to use. Obviously, if anything, we open up and anything seems unsafe, we will alter what our policies are. Computer terminals, so blocking off computer terminals to ensure that there are six feet in between users. Our computer terminals are fairly spread out already. There's kind, they're kind of in pairs around the adult department. So there are two of the pairs that are probably closer than six feet. So if we were to turn off two of the computers, it would have six stations open to the public on the adult section, adult floor, which likely will be enough for the near future. If it seems like we need more, we can relocate them to carols that are a little bit further away. And then having a separate entry and exit, this is something that I hadn't thought about before. But what we'll do is we have that, the exit down the ramp, we'll make that the exit door, and then you can enter through the main building. There will be, they still kind of enter and leave, but that creates a little bit of a congestion at that doorway where the stairwell comes up. But I think that's kind of unavoidable and I really don't think it's too terrible. If you see somebody coming through, you can step back and let them enter or step back and let them leave. And that should be, that should be doable. It does mean that people leaving won't pass our people counter, so that will affect those statistics somewhat, but that's not, not that, that important. So we'll have proper signage up, employee-only areas. We are rearranging the workstation to be employees to make sure that they are six feet apart from each other. So the large things there are that the back room is kind of a congested area and people are in and out of that space quite a bit. So what we're going to do is repurpose the study room that's like around the corner from the circulation desk, and we're going to make that the circulation manager's office. So Claire will move over there so she's not trapped in a little box where she can't move with people in and out of there all the time. There's also a desk right outside the door to the back room, and since that door gets a lot of traffic, that computer station will be shut down for staff and they will be using the other two stations at the desk that are six feet apart, and there's a little bit of space to maneuver around back there. Public areas, the, so keeping seating six feet apart. We'll take a look, and we haven't done this yet, but we're going to take a look at the study tables and remove some of the chairs if necessary. I'm of two minds about this because if a family comes in and they want to use the same space, there's no reason they can't all work at the same table together. I know that some libraries have taken their approach where they've removed all but one chair from each table to ensure that people are far apart. So I want to make sure everything is spread out a little bit, but I'm not going to be removing a whole lot of seating unless it seems like it's necessary. Social distancing markers, we're going to tape up the floor for where the line will be at the circulation desk. We'll make arrows, well, the arrows up and down the staircase are a little bit less important, but still going up the children's floor to make sure that if you're ascending, you're going up the right side, and if you're descending, you're going down to your right and leaving as well. Let's see. So we'll put a, we'll put a sign at the water fountain that people can't, that should only be used to refill water bottles. It's not to be used as a water fountain. And shared equipment, ensure patron, employees or patrons don't share items or equipment without disinfecting between uses by different individuals. So that's something that we're just, that was kind of part of the workflow even before we closed, was just being aware of what you're touching and somebody else is touching. We'll have gloves available for staff if they want them. So I don't think they'll be, they won't be required to wear them. And lots of hand sanitizer, lots of sprays and things where we can keep cleaning common touch surfaces as we go along. Okay, and then other things here, clothes are removed, nonessential amenities, toys, interactive play areas, food and drink stations. So all the toys up in the children's section, all the puzzles, that sort of stuff is going to be stored away for now. We also have the board games, the puzzles, we have like the public puzzle station and the video game controllers in the teen area that will all be stored away for now. Consider installing touchless appliances, tackless payments, paper towel dispensers, soap dispensers, trash cans. We haven't really looked into doing that right now. I think that we can get by without it, but should anything need to be replaced, it's certainly something that we'll consider. Ventilation, increased ventilation rates, increase, increase outdoor air that circulates into the system where possible. I think we're limited with how much we can do with our, the current HVAC setup. We could open windows if that was recommended, but then we would lose the advantage of the air conditioning and the humidity controls, which I think it would end up being a losing trade-off there. Personal protection for employees. So we've made cloth face masks for all of the employees, so they'll have at least two of them that they can take back and forth and wash and make sure that they have while they're at work. In addition, we want to have a small supply of paper masks that we can offer to patrons who forget to wear their masks. It will be required to wear your mask in a building, but at the same time, you can't, you can't inquire why somebody isn't wearing a mask because it could be a hidden disability. So our best solution for that, I think, without being confrontational, will just be to offer, if somebody's not wearing a mask, offer them the mask. Would you like a mask? And if they say no, leave it at that, unfortunately. Okay, what else do we have here? Have hand sanitizer available, cleaning disinfectant products and wipes. Make sure employees are washing hands for at least 20 seconds. Bathroom should be cleaned and disinfected frequently. Yeah, and then this is kind of the standard stuff. So then a daily health check. At this point, we aren't required to take the temperature of employees or patrons entering the building. So we'll just be reminding employees that if you have any of the symptoms or if you're not feeling well at all, to stay home. Yeah, and hoping that they follow that. If we are recommended to take the temperatures, then that's something that we will certainly look into. So this is what the state sent out yesterday. I think by and large, it fits into what we were, what we were assuming the plan would look like. The one that's distributed in your packet, I had suggested that we open up for three days a week on Monday day initially, and then gradually expand hours out as we felt more confident in what we were doing and as more PPE was available. What I had suggested was I'd like to have about a month's worth of PPE in stock when we open up. And I may have overestimated exactly what I was, what I required, but it was apparent, it was kind of a large ask just for the amount of hand sanitizer and face masks that we were able to get. So, so that's something I'm going to have to continue to work with Town Hall to see what we are able to secure as far as PPE goes in the next couple of weeks. But yeah, I'd like to have, I asked for 40 face masks. That's probably more than I need. So probably maybe 10 or 20 would get us along, I think, for, for the first couple of weeks. I asked for disinfectant wipe stations so patrons would have a place to grab a wipe, wipe down their computer, the table that they were, were going to be using because the staff can't really keep up with who was using what. That will likely be replaced with a spray and paper towel type setup. We'll just have to figure out how to secure it so those materials don't walk, but I think a spray bottle might be less attractive than a bin full of wipes. So as long as we have a month's worth of that sort of stuff, I think we'll be in good shape. It'd be nice to have another hand sanitizer station by the front entrance. That's something that I'm looking into right now. And one month's of hand sanitizer would be, so one month for three days a week service would be about three gallons. So we have about a gallon and a half right now. The hand sanitizer's been easier to get than the other stuff, so I'm not super concerned about that. Plastic gloves, we're in good shape for. Rubbing alcohol, we actually have a little bit of a supply because we, right along, we've been cleaning our books down with rubbing alcohol. So we normally have a couple of gallons of those in the building. Of course, this hit during our reorder time, so I've just been in touch with Ace Hardware trying to get our annual four-gallon order whenever they happen to get back in stock. But we have over a gallon of it now, so I think that'll, that'll last us for a little So that's kind of a summary of the PPE that we're looking at. I talked about some of the building changes already for keeping, keeping the employees apart. For materials-wise, we'll continue to offer returns only through the book drops. At the end of every day, a staff person will take all the book drops, put them onto a cart, and then they'll be quarantined or set aside for 48 hours now. Originally, I think I had written 72, but we'll do 48 hours because that's the recommendation. And at that point, they can be checked in and put back on the shelves to be recirculated. So for curbside pickup, the idea is to keep curbside pickup going for the off days. So if we're open three days a week or if we decide that we do two days a week because it'll be easier on the amount of PPE that we have to acquire, then whatever other days, we would just continue the curbside pickup so people can still get materials that way. I think that's kind of a nice way to balance it because you're, you also are giving yourself plenty of time to make sure that the building is in good shape and clean before inviting the public back in instead of jumping straight to five days a week. As far as staffing goes, I had Claire break down the staff into an A team and a B team. So we're going to do our best to have the part-time staff work with the same part-time staff every time they're coming into work. That way, if, if there is an infection among one of the groups, at least we have the other group to maintain some of the library's services while the other group is recovering or getting tested or that sort of thing. For full-timers, we are going to be alternating being in the building and being at home. So for the same reasons, so we're not all, if one person's infected, we're not all suddenly having to sit up and self-quarantine for a couple of weeks or something like that. Programming, so all in-person programming for the summer has been canceled or adapted to virtual platforms. As more staff return to work and we have a little bit more time to experiment with it, I'd like to see what other programs we can work with this medium. You know, I can see it being effective for book groups or movie chats or that sort of thing. And, you know, maybe some things that might even work for summer reading and beyond. And so that's an overview of the plan. The hope would be to start off with a couple of days a week and then, as we felt more comfortable, gradually expand out until we're working our full range of hours, once again. Any questions on that?
Yeah, can you help me, please, with the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, would be pickup, curbside pickup, Monday, Wednesday and Friday? You could actually... would be pickup, curbside pickup, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, you could actually enter the library?
Yes, so Tuesday, Thursday, yeah, for this plan, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we would be open to the public. Tuesday, Thursday, we would be closed to the public, still offering curbside pickup.
And what, what would the hours be, Kevin?
Oh, I was suggesting 10 to 4, which is what we are currently operating curbside pickup for.
And nothing on Saturday?
Nothing on Saturday, although it's certainly up for discussion. My view was to start small and then gradually include Saturday and evenings, but if we feel Saturdays are important, which they are, in the summer, they're traditionally not our busiest day, but we could certainly prioritize that as one of the days that we could be open. Or even offer curbside.
And if you had your, if you had your druthers, what date would you, the director of the library, feel comfortable with saying, okay, we're open for business?
I mean, as much as everything's changing, I think after July 4th is kind of a nice thing. It's a little bit of symmetry in terms of we started opening up a little bit after Memorial Day and then kind of after July 4th, with, you know, the next holiday, we're opening up a little bit more. So I think that works nice from that perspective. My one concern about it is that I'm off the week before July 4th, so the Monday after that would be July 6th. So I guess I would prefer to start on the 8th, just so I wasn't coming back from vacation immediately reopening. But that would be, you know, that could be workable too.
Okay, any questions out there for Kevin?
This is Gail. I think, I read these earlier today, and I think they're very thorough. They incorporate everything that Kevin had already written up. But I would be concerned about trying to open in June, so I'm much happier with the July date. It allows for getting everything into place, the staff getting trained, and all the new moving around inside the building straightened out. So that's, those are my thoughts on it.
Gail, when you say the July date, are you comfortable with Wednesday, July 8th?
I was leaning towards July 6th, but I don't want to put Kevin in advice, so.
Okay.
But yeah, July 6th would have been my preference.
Okay.
We can certainly do the 6th too.
Anything else for Kevin out there?
Danielle.
I was going to advocate for at least one evening or Saturday, doesn't matter which, just so that people who are working will have access to the library like all of the other patrons. So I don't know how that affects the hours, but I feel it might be nice to offer to everybody in town the opportunity to use the library, and if we're only open 10 to 4, that's going to exclude a lot of people.
I was going to mention that too, Danielle, I agree with you. I was going to say, Kevin, I was going to say, how about we do, we try to get some hours on Saturday?
Okay, that's certainly. Open up on a Saturday.
And the other thing I wanted to add was, I think, having some kind of written policy or list of steps for employees and for people visiting the library, maybe putting it in the papers so that they know what the procedures are each day. What is it that they are required to do? If someone's visiting the library, they need to know about, are there going to be arrows on the floor, or is it every other computer? I just think it's really important. And maybe so some signage and some advertising, like even when you go to the grocery store now, there's a sign out front telling you, please put this on, please do this, please stand on the X, follow the arrows going here and there. I just want to make sure that we're getting our message out.
Signage is definitely part of the.
I can comment on, Danielle, there's some, some of the signage is required signage that will be across every single town department and building, including the certification that we have, we are going, we have acquired to open our buildings, the DECD certification. And then some buildings or departments, the library would be, one would have more signage, specific signage to the services that are being provided. The staff will all be trained on all the protocols, all the procedures. They will receive a copy of the reopening plan, any guidelines, this, the sector policy. They will all receive a copy of that. They will receive training on the policies and the guidelines. They'll receive training on proper use of PPE, how to take, you know, put gloves on, take gloves off, how to wear the mask, how to use the mask, and also how to clean the, in each individual staff member, how to clean their work areas or things that they will be doing. So there's extensive training involved, and that's one of the things, one of the reasons why it is taking so long to get everything in place. But, but I think I agree, some information for the patrons would also be helpful, that maybe we could post that on the Facebook page and on the website before, even before opening day, so people know what to expect when they come in.
Excellent, thank you, Donna.
That would be something that'd be good to aim for the July newsletter. We can put that out for sure.
Anything else for Kevin? And I'll undertake a motion that we shoot for opening the library on Monday, July 6th, pending Kevin's revision to hours for Saturday.
I think Mary Ann made the motion, I'll second it.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none?
What I would likely do is just change Fridays to Saturdays then. So it'd be Monday, Wednesday, Saturday, or maybe even Monday, Thursday, Saturday, or something like that, but I will let you know.
Well, yeah, let us know because ultimately, we have to get this over to Town Hall. I think, Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if you can go back with the date tonight, that'll be enough, that'll be sufficient for Town Hall's needs at the moment.
We have a reopening committee that meets weekly, and Kevin is on the committee. Pretty much every department head or building, the building has a representative there. And that committee as a whole, working with Chatham Health, is reviewing all of the reopening plans for each department. So that recommendation of the July 6th date will go, you know, that this is the date the Board of Trustees is recommending, but ultimately, the, the committee will review that and make sure that everything is in place. Because there are, like Kevin said, there are, you know, PPEs and some things we still need to acquire and make sure we can deploy them. So we're going to push for that date, but it's not written in stone until we, we can assure that everything is in place to make that happen. So, you know, we meet weekly, we meet pretty much every Thursday, so we'll be discussing this on Thursday. Because it's part of a, the library's part of a bigger plan.
Thank you.
We're trying to, we're trying to find the hand sanitizer dispensers, you know, the kind, the portable ones that stand by the door. We can't, we cannot find them anywhere. So I think, you know, we need to have those at each, at each location. And we'll, we'll figure something out, but it, you know, nothing, nothing is written in stone and everything changes, you know, daily, things are changing. Like Kevin said, it's a, it's a moving target. The other thing you might want to include here would be the, the return date to bring the part-time staff back in. I don't know if you want to include that in your motion or maybe discuss that after you vote.
I, I look at that as a separate item personally, but, but I'll certainly listen to what the board members have to say.
I think it's a separate motion.
Anyone else want to weigh in on that one?
I think it's a separate motion. I think we should just vote on when we open first.
Yeah, it's, it's two separate motions.
Okay, so let's, let's continue on then with, with the motion I believe Mary Ann made and Gail seconded, and that is for the, our recommendation for the library to open on Monday, July 6th. All those in favor of that motion, please signify. Well, wait a minute, we'll do a roll call.
Gail Richmond?
Aye.
Peter Casarella?
Aye.
Emma Foot?
Uh huh.
Sue Porter?
Aye.
Althea Carr?
Aye.
Dale Bland?
Aye.
And Danielle Galligan?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it unanimous, good, thank you. Now, the second motion concerning bringing back our part-time employees. Will someone make a motion on that, please?
What's the recommendation from Kevin?
I was going to ask a question too.
Well, I'd like it back at least two weeks before we are anticipating opening to the public, so that would be June 22nd, which would be two weeks from today. You know, even if they wanted to come back earlier, we have a lot of work they could do in the building, so I'm happy to have the part-time staff back as soon as, soon as they're able to come back.
There a reason why they can't come back?
I've just been, at, at the moment, I've been asked to not bring them back by Town Hall. I don't know exactly what the reasoning is, but we, I'm not, I'm asked to not bring them in right now.
I know most of the staff are very anxious to get back.
Well, my recommendation would be if we're going to try and get this up and running for July 6th, and there's so much that needs to be done, that as soon as you possibly can have them back, I think that's, that we should get started so that you're not rushed at the end for the opening.
If the state is reopening for the 17th of June, why can't we use that date?
Well, the 22nd is a Monday, right? So it's just a few days later. We got a weekend in between.
Well, you've got three days that you would have lost.
Yeah. I'm comfortable making a motion supporting Kevin's recommendation of Monday, June 22nd, to bring the part-timers back.
So it's moved, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, sounds like we had a second or two there.
Okay, well, I, this was true, I seconded it.
Any further discussion on bringing 22nd? Okay, hearing none. Kevin, if you would do a roll call vote, please?
All right, I'm going to come back to Peter at the end. Mary Ann Foot?
Aye.
Sue Porter?
Aye.
Althea Carr?
Aye.
Dale Bland?
Aye.
Gail Richmond?
Aye.
Danielle Galligan?
Aye.
And Peter Casarella?
Aye. Okay, unanimous, great. Okay. Item seven on our agenda, strategic plan committees. So I guess I'm first with a safe space, and I have to tell you, I didn't do anything during the pandemic regarding a safe space, so I have no new items to report. Technology? Donna and Danielle?
I don't have anything new to report, but if there's anything that you need, just let us know.
And I can report that we've been learning lots of new things about technology during but, and we're, you know, staying on target with our computer replacement policies and plans, and we've been providing whatever support we can to all of our departments to help with the remote, remote, working from home.
Thank you. Diversity, Dale?
I have nothing.
Community, Gail and Deb?
I have nothing.
Lifelong learning, Althea?
Sorry, I started talking before I unmuted myself. Nothing that I know of. I just know that the children's programs have been continuing, you know, technically, but that's it.
Our next meeting is scheduled for July 13th. Don't know if we'll be in person or over the phone again. Is there anything else this evening for the good of the group?
Peter, I just want to say that I was thinking about the new budget that's coming up in five months. We should definitely, as a group and the library, publicize what the library has done during this time to stress the importance of the services to the community. Because we don't want to be looking at cuts to our budget with coming next year. I mean, everything's going to be tight and more than likely somewhere we're going to lose something, but I think we still need to start now stressing how important the library is to the town. Even, even an email, you know, to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, anything, I think with the virtual meetings, you can have it read and it'll be recorded. People that are watching it online will hear it. And, you know, just keep, keep the library in their heads so that they realize we're still here and what, what is being done for the betterment of the town. That's my thought.
Yeah, I agree with you, so we need, the libraries are essential to the quality of life in town. So I agree with that. That is why Kevin will tell you every time there's a Board of Selectmen meeting, I contact him and ask about some positive things that I can report in my liaison report. And that's why, because we go, we're live on Facebook and I want the townspeople to understand that the taxes are paying for something that's meaningful to them.
I can confirm she does do that.
Maybe you can put a synopsis together of the items that you've sent to Gail, and we'll work collectively on a joint, either a letter to the River East and, and out on the website, or a, some type of communication that we can get out to the public to show what, what's been done during this time. to show what, what's been done during this time period.
And also, I think, I think at one point, we were having something on the River East about what events at the library too, and, and, you know, encouraging information going out. Heben views is important too, get something in there from the desk of Kevin Sullivan.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Giving you more work.
I've been better about getting here. No, that's fine. And we, we usually do have a listing of events going out in the River East. It's just done less events to list lately. But I can absolutely put together a synopsis of some of the work that we've done while the building's been closed and send it out. I think that's a great idea, thank you for that.
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Portions of the website, you know, done, something different each week could be submitted to the, to the River East, not as letters, but as, you know, little, just little narratives and perhaps with pictorials, because that catches people's attention.
A press release is what you mean, Mary Ann.
A what?
A press release, just a small.
Yeah, absolutely.
To go on, go on the Heben page.
And it can be small, but I would submit something every week, because, especially if there's a picture and a good caption, they'll grab it and go with it.
Well, if you put something together, Kevin, if you send it over to me and you and I can discuss it, take a look at it and decide how we send it out.
Sounds good, Peter, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anything else, folks?
This is Althea. Kevin, you mentioned choosing the three days besides the Saturday. So I don't, I was thinking maybe Monday, Wednesday, Saturday might be a good three days. I don't know how others feel or think what would, would work best.
And then you still have your Tuesday, Thursday, that's good.
Yeah.
So we'd have Tuesday, Thursday, for, I mean, I don't, I don't know that I have a, if it's, you know, Wednesday on, Tuesday off, Wednesday on, then Thursday, Friday off, and then Saturday on, I think that's.
I thought Thursday was going to be your curbside.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I mean, yes. When I said off, I meant curbside. Thursday and Friday would still be curbside in that scenario. Yeah, that would be fine.
Each day would be 10 to 4 for the opening right now?
Let me think about it a little bit. Maybe what I can do is do one 10 to 4 day to get the earlier section, one evening day, and then the Saturday as well, so we're hitting as much of the population as possible. I'm torn between keeping it, yeah. It's just I'm torn between keeping it simple, because people have a hard time keeping track of our schedule as it is and trying to, trying to balance, you know, hitting everybody, but let me think about it.
You'll let us know then, what you're coming up with?
Yes.
Anything else out there? Hearing nothing, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Moved by Gail Richmond, seconded by Dale Bland, just for the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, great, I'll go down the roll call. I know it's maybe not necessary, but Althea Carr?
Aye.
Dale Bland?
Aye.
Danielle Galligan?
Aye.
Peter Cassarella?
Yes.
Gail Richmond?
Aye.
And May Foot?
I am good night.
And Sue Porter?
Aye.
Okay, great. Nice to see everybody.
Thank you all, stay safe.
Yes, bye.
You, Peter.
Bye.
Bye.